If everyone will join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. Hopefully, everyone had a chance last night to see the amazing star. I know out in the country there, there was, I think, more, our population doubled based on how many cars were out looking and stopping. But good morning. We have an agenda in front of us. If there's no changes or corrections, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second, Gillespie.
Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
We have our claims reports. Moves on to our consent agenda. If there's no corrections to that, I'd ask for a motion to approve as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
That being motion second. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Takes us right into the opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the board concerning any issues, be the time and place. Seeing none. Is there any comment that the board needs to address? Otherwise, we'll keep moving on our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to take the opportunity to wish people here and that are visiting us via Zoom or technology a very Merry Christmas. And hopefully, that 21 will be another breakthrough and we can put 2020 behind us.
Very good. With that, we'll move on to our regular business items. And now that I have the, I think, correct agenda in front of us as opposed to last week, first item will be, as it's not 9:05, our auditor. Good morning.
Good morning. So we need to do some contingency transfers to clean up for the end of the year. The first one is going to be to the Board of Commissioners for $12,000 due to publishing cost that increased. There was a lot of advertising that we did that wasn't accounted for. A contingency transfer, this should be the final one for elections. We had final bills come in from ESNS. Then there was little mileage things, but this should be the final postage and whatnot from the recount. Contingency transfer to the Highway Shop Bond Interest for $200. Earlier in the year, the treasurer had recorded a fee from the US Bank. And this, it hit the interest, so we have to put the 200 in there to get that cleaned up. Contingency transfer to Information and Technology, $72,000. There was COVID upgrades that were necessary, so that brought his budget a little short. Public Welfare needs a contingency transfer in the amount of $20. We just underestimated the utility cost. And then a contingency transfer to the insurance premium, the 101, 4167421, in the amount of $9,000. It was an additional general ledger premium.
You've heard the report and request. Is there any questions? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Okay, so then secondly, we need to appoint an appraisal committee for the parcel that was surplus up in the consent agenda. Three, the appraisal committee will need to be three Lincoln County property owners.
Any board member willing to volunteer?
When, where is this at?
In Hudson.
In Hudson. Is this something that I can do before the 5th, or is it not?
Well, you can even do it after the 5th. You'll still be a resident in Lincoln County.
Okay, I can, I could take that. Yeah, I could take that. Yep. I could be one person anyway.
Anybody else? I guess I haven't done one for a while. Todd. Perfect. Thank you.
I was gonna, I was gonna give it to Commissioner Jim, so he could get down on us. But I don't know. We like y'all, Jim.
So that will be it until my hearing.
So we'll need a motion for those to be, yeah. Is there a motion to those, for those three?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Gillespie.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Thank you. We still got some time before the 9:05, so we'll keep moving here. Julia, good morning.
Good morning. Several things for you this morning. The first is, it's my understanding, per STCL 338-1-22, we need to reappoint our Veterans Services Officer formally for the next four years. That appointment would be good through the first Monday in January of 2024.
You've heard the request. Is there a motion of that effect?
It's my pleasure to appoint Susan Lyons back for another four years.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schmidt, Commissioner Landine for the second. Any questions? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Okay. Next is to accept the resignation of Jess Wicker, full-time Deputy Register of Deeds effective the 25th of December.
Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
And a second?
Second, Gillespie.
Thank you. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Next is to promote Sean Stefan from Heavy Equipment Operator to Foreman in the Highway Shop at 2594 per hour effective the 13th of December.
I'll ask for a motion of that effect.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Great. Next on the agenda would be the Sheriff's Office position request. So over this year alone, we have lost seven part-time transporters. We currently have only three. It's my understanding that two, three, four are necessary at a time. So this request is for a full-time transporter to ensure that someone's available. This person will also be backup for the 24/7 program and then also courthouse security. And the cost would be relatively the same because the funds are there. We're just having a consistent person.
And that's with the insurance and all the SDRS benefits and?
There may be a little bit, just based on the, the insurance selection, but all in all, it's going to be a wash. And logistically speaking, it will be a better situation.
What are your thoughts, anybody?
Well, we need somebody to drive prisoners around and to be for safety purposes, so I think this is.
I, I. Just to add a little bit that, we, we're also required to do video court. Because of COVID, we're not bringing them down here. So I have to have somebody up at the video court in Sioux Falls daily. And I also need to have people here for security. So I just don't, I don't have enough people.
Commissioner Aaron's, I, did I hear a motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So in other words, he's not, he or she will not be sitting around. There's plenty of things to do if, if it isn't transporting somebody.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be good. With COVID, our part-time reserve.
Drop, yep. Any other questions? Sean, please call the roll. So it's a motion to advertise for that position. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, one, it would be to add an FTE, and then with your approval, we'll just start recruiting right away if that's okay with you.
Is that fine with your motion? Thank you. And your second?
Yes.
Thank you. Sean, clear?
Perfect. Let's go. Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Next is to reclassify a position in the, the Highway Department. Currently budgeted, Terry has two promotional opportunities from light to heavy. However, he'd like to use one of those promotional opportunities to reclassify a heavy equipment operator into a heavy equipment specialist position because the individual currently is doing some, the majority of the time spent fabricating. So it's have, have higher level responsibilities. This would be consistent of how other people are classified in the, in the department.
So is that clear enough for, to move forward, or are we?
Move for approval on, on that request for reclassifications, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Any other questions? Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Okay, lastly, I believe, is the transfer from the Transfer Station Supervisor into Buildings and Grounds. John Rambo and I have had lots of discussion about this, what this individual will do. Based on those responsibilities, the position, a job description has been, been made. A classification has been met. It's going to be a 106. The classification is less than what the incumbent is currently making. So my question to the commission is, would you like to keep the individual at the current compensation or move him to the new classification?
Well, at the time that we said we were going to close the transfer station, we said it would be at no prejudice to any full-time employee.
That, that has been our policy in the past, so are you willing to motion then that it stays at the same? And what will we have to, will still classify him at a different?
So the new, the new position would be a Lead Maintenance Worker at a grade 106, and then that would be under Building and Grounds. So.
And that's less?
Yeah.
But we have to deviate from that in order to dissipate any prejudice to?
So we need guidance on what the motion needs to, to specify is how we address that.
The motion needs to be at least that he stays where he was.
Compensation remains the same.
So Commissioner Aaron's, do you offer that motion?
Yeah, I mean, here's what my motion would be, is that we set that position at whatever Mr. Hanson's current salary is. And then he'll be moved over into that position, correct?
Okay, I, I think that works. Is there a second to that?
That works. I'll second that.
Okay.
And then for the purposes of discussion, I guess I'll ask this. Does that create any problems in the few, either currently or in the future with
Yeah.
deviating from what we have in our policy manual as for the salary? Or do we need to create a new position here with a new title in order to be able to deviate from the 59 to the 63?
So in classifying positions, how we built it is whatever the, the essential function of the position is, that's why I worked with John in this, so that would be a 106. So if you wanted to keep the same compensation, by all means, he'll, he'll just be at the top of the range. And he, there'll be no room in the range for advancement here within the next couple of years until the range catches up with him. Did that answer your question?
It does, partially.
Okay.
The other issue, yeah, so if we can do a 106 at 63,000.
Yep.
That would meet the intent of my motion for right now.
And that agrees with your second?
I'll, I'll agree with that. Okay. And the, the applicant or the, the moon is acceptable to that? The person taking the job?
Yes.
Perfect. Sean, I think we can go ahead with the vote then.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff, I think we have time yet.
Sorry.
Okay, just an update on the stuff I brought you a couple of weeks ago on the Dispatch Council. I did get shot down from the state on the additional money. I do appreciate, obviously, there were some calls made by the board because I've received calls that you guys were supporting it. After researching this a little bit and talking to, to the auditor, so the money from CARES, it is, we've currently received for Dispatch went into the Dispatch 911 Fund, and it has to be spent on 911. So our current balance is actually $662,000 with another $90,000 coming from CARES. So I asked Todd Baldwin to go back to Sioux Falls Two Way and see if there's anything we could do at a less expensive option to what, to upgrading our councils, which I'll have him come up and explain him at. The ZTRON system, we're told is apples-to-apples to the Motorola system. Motorola is, is obviously a known brand name, so I, but it, the price is considerably more for the Motorola. So he, he went to them and got a, a price that would upgrade our ZTRON syst, our councils to the mobile system that we were requesting for. It's 377 is the, the top. You see the recorder on here? That was not even included in the 675 for Motorola, which we also need. Since then, the state of South Dakota, the 911 Fund for the state is awarding us $116,067.72 for dispatch center upgrades. So we'd have that in addition to the roughly $730,000. So it'd be my recommendation, what I'm asking is a motion to approve the purchase of the ZTRON, to upgrade our system. Because as I've told you, our, our old system is out of date and no longer serviced. This would take us 20 years?
It was 15.
So that, this would, this would get us where we needed to be at no, no cost to the taxpayers of Lincoln County. And it seems like a good fit for what we were looking for.
You've heard the request. Is there any comments, questions?
Just a question. Is this, now, is this VTRON system, Todd, is that equivalent to Motorola?
It is equivalent. It, it, there's several dispatch centers in the area that have the VTRON system. And very functional. Sioux Falls Two Way maintains its services. I have the utmost confidence in it. We have used and selling in ZTRON equipment in the past with no issue whatsoever. I've always preferred Motorola because of the, and the serviceability of Sioux Falls. But this, when we did the bid, we got an apples, an apples-to-apples comparison. And so I'm very confident.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the purchase. All right, is there a second?
I'll second. Thank you. Any other questions?
Todd, just a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Is, how old is the current system? And you've been kind of piecing it together, right, Todd, for how many years?
I think I, we did an upgrade in 2000.
Okay, so 20 years old, yeah.
We bought Sioux Falls Metro's when they pulled it out right after we moved over here. We bought theirs just because we knew the end of life was close with this. So we bought theirs basically for parts.
Right, and I, I think you'd mentioned that a while back, and so that's, you're just, you're kind of piecing it together.
Sorry. Thanks, Todd, if you, you got the polite reminder.
Yes, yes, so, yeah, that is.
Yeah, I remember all that, so.
Our tractor in the grove, I believe, day along.
Yeah. Very good. Any other questions?
So Sheriff, you, you take the $116,000, does that go towards this too as well? Or is that just extra funds for us to use for?
Honestly, it's, it's, the, the, the whole.
Whole ballpark.
Plan is to upgrade the furniture in there as well.
Yeah.
Which is, we just had somewhere there, it's another $40,000 or $50,000. But there's $700,000 in there, so we can do every upgrade we need and literally have a new dispatch center at no cost.
At no cost to the taxpayers.
Is there a timeline in which you have to have that spent?
November, next year.
Next November. Very good.
For the $116,000.
How about there were other?
Nope, because we already have that money.
We already have it.
Okay. The, the motion might need to include a motion to supplement the budget because this is not budgeted for.
Here comes the boss.
I brought all my backup.
So how, I think, separate motion?
Well, we're probably not going to pay for it this year.
Right.
So I'll wait and do the supplement next year.
Okay, sure. All right. Are we good? Sean, please call the roll.
Just a question.
Yes.
This is to authorize the purchase of ZTRON from Sioux Falls Two Way for $377,785, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
That's, that's your motion then, second. Correct? Yeah, we're good.
Yeah. Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Commissioner Aaron's, do you want to take the lead on the Garnos study? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I believe a couple of weeks ago, we had discussed the way forward with regard to our prisoner population. At that time, I had discussed in length what was going on with Minnehaha County and Lincoln Counties. Specifically, Sheriff Swin, or Sheriff Milstead, at our meeting, at which Sheriff Swenson was present with myself and Commissioner Schmidt, had requested that if we're going to move forward with further discussions with Minnehaha County, he would like to know essentially how much runway he is going to have in terms of being able to handle projected prisoner population. So what we had decided as a group internally that met that day that we would refresh the Cooper, or excuse me, the Bill Garnos study with regard to the prisoner population. So we went, I went and talked to Mr. Garnos. He gave us an estimate. The estimate came in at $7,200. And so my motion today is I'm asking for approval of the proposal submitted by Bill Garnos to update the inmate population trends and projections for Lincoln and Minnehaha Counties. Is there a second?
Second. Oh, okay.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Who is the second on that?
Gillespie.
Gillespie.
Thank you.
Sean, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Anything else on that, Commissioner Aaron's? No, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. We have a little ordinance codification proposal, Sean. You want to take the lead on that, please?
Yes. Back in October, the Planning and Zoning Director and the Chief Civil Deputy State's Attorney and I met about the ordinance book as it is displayed on our website. And the problem that we discussed was that if somebody doesn't know what they're looking for, it is very difficult for them to find it. And we want to solve this problem. I reached out to American Legal and they sent a proposal to do a full codification, a legal review, as well as their search web display, which has a lot of ability to search, is completely ADA compatible, which would match up with our new website upgrades. And they can do so for an estimated 350 pages for $7,595.
And the additional cost per page, what was that again? I read through those 20?
The additional cost for future is $22 per page unless it has images within the ordinance. So like the International Building Code ordinances that we passed this year, those have some images. And that would add an additional $10 per page. And then after the first year of the web hosting, it's $495 per year to host that web, webpage. And this would be the same system that you would find on, like, the city of Sioux Falls and, in their proposal, in the share file and the public information packet. For anybody who's in, in the audience here, there's a list of other counties and municipalities in South Dakota that use this product.
I did not see the actual document that would come for the contract. It would come later. This is just their proposal. So motion today would be to accept their proposal?
Yes.
Is there a motion of that effect? So moved, Mr. Chairman. Yes?
May I have the motion to approve and authorize the chair to execute the ordinance codification proposal from American Legal Publishing Corporation?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? All right, Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Thank you. Sean is excellent. Hey. You have 15 minutes.
This didn't take me very long, anyway. So just a couple of quick updates. The facility needs study is basically complete. They would, I think, like to still visit a little more with court services. I'm not sure how much of that communication happened since I was gone and not involved. I do know, I, I think with, I'm trying to think of the name of the guy from the Minnehaha County that oversees the court services and.
Carl Tonas.
Yeah, Carl, I think Carl participated, so I'm not sure quite why they need more input from anybody else because Carl pretty much oversees them a little bit, anyway. But basically, the short of it is, and I could pull it up if you guys want me to display something, but it's appearing that there's obviously a need for additional space. So the, basically, the study, I think, is providing good information, so when we do meet as a committee, they'll have the information to see what needs to possibly be put into a, the overall fix of the problem. So, but the short of it is, is it looks like courts are saying they're going to need additional space beyond what the current old courthouse will probably be able to supply. In addition to that, the one thing that I guess I would like to add before we start meeting as a committee whenever that gets put together is I think we also need to have some more information outside of just what the old courthouse needs are, and that is what our needs are in the admin side. The overall fix of this, I should, I think, should include, obviously, if we have to do any kind of expansion, we have to include what we might need in other offices throughout the whole courthouse. So I would like to move forward and see if we can have ARC, Inc. visit with all the department heads and put those numbers together also. It sounded like that would be roughly maybe $5,000. I, you know, I can authorize up to $5,000, obviously, but if it goes over that, I would maybe need to have the support of the board. That is something I already had in my budget for the 21 budget year, so it shouldn't be a big deal.
Any questions on that?
To what extent has, has the judiciary been involved in the study thus far?
So they, when they first met, oh, I'll take over since he was there. Since John wasn't around at the time when we met, I went ahead and sat in with them, and so the presiding judge came down and Judge Erasmus and came down and Carl Thonis came down. And they explained what their situation was to the architects in a meeting and what they expected right now. What they're, what, in essence, they were saying is that they have probably over the last three months been sending down between two to four judges down here, and since we have two courtrooms that are functional and one that's two ways, a meeting space more than anything else, that they were having terrible times in order to schedule things down here. So that was one. They were also running through some of the numbers for the court cases and stuff and the growth. One of the things that Carl had told us was in the last 10 years, Lincoln County has had a 226% increase in cases. And that was kind of surprising to him for this one fact. When they look at Pennington, they look at Brown County, and they look at Minnehaha County, they say for 100,000, they expect X amount of cases. Lincoln County runs below that. We've always, we, our numbers down here have been below what our population is. And what they speculate is, is because we've had a lot of housing growth down here, tends to be high income, that we've run fewer cases for the civil, the criminal, and the juvenile. But now as it's starting to develop and look a lot more like Aberdeen, Pennington, Rapid City, and Sioux Falls, they expect at some point to see a spike. And so we're already short space, but that's kind of their interpretation. They don't know when that's going to occur, but they know, they don't have an explanation for why our cases per capita doesn't match everybody else in the state. That's their guess, and that's what they expect to happen.
How, so in this whole process, I know we talked, and we, there's going to be an advisory committee, and there's going to be some members of the public on that advisory committee. How are we protecting through that process, security in the courthouse? Because I don't think that those things should be common knowledge to the general public, so I guess I would ask that those be addressed outside of that advisory committee with court staff and the sheriff's office and things of that nature. How is that being handled?
I, as far as the composition of the committee, and my understanding of it is, is they're looking at needs. So I think that space needs, that's growth needs, those are all the type of things. And I think the general understanding of there has to be security and there's security concerns, but I don't know that this committee is going to actually be putting pen to paper and drawing up plans. but I don't know that this committee is going to actually be putting pen to paper and drawing up plans necessarily. They, they're going to bring those proposals here. So I think the committee is going to be, and I may be wrong, but addressing the needs, the space opportunities, and the general, the big general picture. So, I mean, one of the, that was one of the things that the judges did talk about was just some of the issues for security down here that we have. But I don't know that those are things that we have to go specifically into in public. And we don't talk about security issues when it comes to transports, jails, courthouses. So, unless I have a misunderstanding.
Security of the judiciary is important. Judges need to be able to feel secure and safe, knowing that they won't be heckled or pestered or bothered by someone who gets a bad decision, or even someone who may get a good decision. So, security is going to be important. I think in terms of the advisory committee, from the way that I see it occurring, the committee is free to discuss security concerns. Maybe that's a hot topic the public wants to ensure input is provided on. But in terms of policies, procedures, protocols, transportation schedules, even diagrams of what the blueprints that the architect may develop, stairwell locations, you know, how you access certain points, we are many, many, many months away from having drawings and blueprints and things like that that may or may not be accessible by the public. Hopefully, the public can respect that process and understand. At the same time, the public is free to provide input on that process. I've actually received a call from a former law enforcement official who wants to serve on the committee, on the advisory committee, because he wants to ensure that we've got safe and secure space for the judiciary to meet. So that's actually an area or topic he wanted to provide input on. In terms of any type of confidential materials that would ensure the safety of the judiciary and law enforcement, I'm sure that we could implement appropriate safeguards to make sure that that's, that's closehold material that won't get out into the open.
I, I think we'll all agree on that. Any other questions on that update, then? Can we get through the memorial quickly or the way?
Do you guys want me to pull up the, you, you obviously have seen the basic schematics. Do you want me to pull those up quickly? I mean it-
Anybody?
John, before we move on to that, though, do you need a motion? Or can you, within the existing budget safeguards you have, move forward with the needs assessment for the admin portion of the courthouse? Or do you need a motion from us?
Well, it's a little bit of a gray area because if it flips over $5,000, I'll have to come back and get a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, then, that we authorize and approve John to do a needs assessment using ARC, Inc., right?
Correct.
To determine the, the needs for the administrative portion of the courthouse.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Was there a cap that you think that it would not for sure go over?
I would just like, he, just off the cuff said he thought he could keep it around $5,000.
Okay. Any other questions? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
So do you want me to pull up the Veterans Memorial stuff? So basically, the Veterans Memorial, I'll let you know, you had two options. And one did include moving the existing Canton Veterans Memorial. I had that in motion from a previous meeting when I was out and doing, doing the meeting by Zoom. I just didn't remove it. But at, at the say the least, I think it needs to be tabled anyway until we get farther along in the other process.
I think John is off the table. I just think it's totally off the table at this time. Following a meeting that we had with, Susan and I had with the VFW and the American Legion, we more or less just said, leave that alone. And they intended upgrade. I think we should focus on our new proposal.
So that said, then, do I keep moving forward and reach out and kind of get some price estimates of what it's going to take to put the flagpoles up? Or are we still waiting until?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we're off.
Because they're probably, you know, it may be part of the courthouse renovation. It may be a lot of things, but we need to move forward. We need to know some prices.
At least get some numbers.
Yeah, get some numbers.
That's basically what I put it on there for, but I did want to show you the, the-
Is that all right with everyone?
Yeah, I think as a financing mechanism, we could bootstrap, if there is support, both from this commission and the public, for courthouse improvement of some kind, we can bootstrap onto that. And then that way, we save on mobilization fees and contractor fees and things like that. And so if there is improvements to the courthouse, we can have those contractors coming in at the same time. And then it'll be a total revamp.
Correct.
But, yeah.
At the very least, if we did move forward with that, it could very well be disrupted by the project because even just what we did with Bat renovation stuff had some sidewalk damage. And, you know, it just, you get equipment out there, it's going to cause some problems, so.
Yeah, and just so the public knows, these plans are calling for electrical and lighting and a lot of concrete to be poured and things like that. Those are all things that if there is a courthouse improvement, you could pull that into any kind of potential quote or bid or contract in the future. So this keeps the idea of our support for the Veterans Memorial on the table. It communicates to people that it'll be part of some type of courthouse improvement if that happens. If there is no support for that, we can move independently to do, do the memorial.
Correct.
Yes. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jim, you know, you called me after that meeting on that Friday and thank you for doing that.
Yep.
Commissioner Schmidt, anyway. Yeah, I think until, until we get a little further down the way, you know, I, I think eventually, you know, there, there'll be a change out back here of some sort. But until we get to that point, but I, I think it could encompass the whole, if there is a remodel or an annex put on for courtrooms, et cetera, that could all encompass that down in the future. You know, so I, I just don't feel that the Veterans Memorial should be, if there is an annex to the, to the north for, for some odd reason someday, or I don't know, Jim, you may comment on this.
Well, I'm just going to say, one way or another, we're going to get a memorial to our veterans and it's going to be in front of our courthouse, period.
Yeah.
End of statement.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I agree with that. I won't be here then, but I do support that. So there's money that's been put out and I'd, I'd like to see that remain in that account until Commissioner Ehrens commented, till we get down the road. And it might be months yet before we come to all that. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay. So kind of have the guidelines. If you can get some numbers, that's fine, but everything's just going to become part of a bigger project as it, as it-
Sounds good.
Mobilizes.
I will get some numbers.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
Thank you. Forgive me for being tardy, but it is 9:08, so we will have the 9:05 rezoning. Toby, are you going to lead us through it? Or Sean, you want to read?
This is a public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County regarding a change of zone request for the property legally described as a southwest quarter, except Lot H1 of Section 34, Township 100 North, Range 49 West of the 5th Principal Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from the A1 Agricultural Zoning District to the RR Rural Residential Zoning District. Planning Commission recommends approval, four to one. Location is in northwest corner of the intersection of 273rd Street and 480th Avenue near Harrisburg.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Toby Round representing County Planning Department. This petition was submitted by Eric Willidson on behalf of the Carolyn Porter Trust. This property is approximately 160 acres. The current zoning is a mix of A1 agricultural and RC rec conservation. The proposal is to change the zoning of a portion of the 160 acres, approximately 140 acres, to RR Rural Residential. Comprehensive plan designation for this area is currently agricultural area. On the screen is the zoning and the regulatory floodplain for the property. As you can see, majority of property is zoned, A1 agricultural. There is a spot of RC rec conservation to the north side of it in association with the lake. There is a portion of regulatory floodplain on the property. However, that is not part of the rezone. That will continue to remain RC rec conservation. Surrounding property is primarily agriculture. Again, there is some RC rec conservation, but the primary use of that property is agricultural. The site does currently have a farmstead and some associated buildings on it. That portion of the property will also not be rezoned. That will be left A1 agricultural. Concept plan was submitted with the application. To the top of this screen, that shows the lot layouts conceptually. The process still has to go through Phase Two, which is the preliminary plan and the subdivision plan process that was tabled by the Planning Commission. On the bottom side, you'll see that outlines exactly the areas that would be rezoned. Again, approximately 140 acres would be rezoned to rural residential. On the northwest corner of the property, or the, or the southeast corner of the property will remain ag, as well as the farmstead. And then the RC rec conservation will remain along on the north side of property. My understanding is the landowner is working with the Game Fish and Parks on that north side of the, that will remain RC rec conservation. As far as project analysis, again, in sum, the application is requesting the change of zone approximately 100, 140 acres of the 160 acre parcel from the A1 agricultural district and the RC conservation district to the RR Rural Residential District. Concept is for multi-phase, single-family residential development, again, approximately 68 lots. Feature land use map of the comprehensive plan currently defines this as an agricultural area. However, substantial change has occurred in the vicinity of Lake Elvin over the years. And primarily, that, that change has gone towards rural residential development. Just within the last two years, the county has rezoned a significant portion of what is the west side of Lake Elvin. This proposed development should be compatible with existing agricultural uses in the area and existing residential development in the vicinity. Also, that the proposal is to really preserve some of that natural environment. There's a proposed lake and some of those natural features. As far as criteria, again, your comprehensive plan is your main criteria. However, we don't have any standards, but as far as standards, you could look to that this, this will be accessed off of two county hard surface roads. It shouldn't put any unreasonable burden on the local townships, as well as that this will provide a much-needed residential development in the county that's running low on residential, rural residential lots. Also that, I'd be happy to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time. Again, this is a public hearing in consideration of adoption of an ordinance to change this property.
Is there any questions for staff?
Toby, all of these 68 lots will be septic?
Yes.
And we, do we have quantification that a septic will be, you know, some places are not receptive to that? That's the question. And will this require a road district?
Yes and yes. So the first step to that is the county does have an onsite wastewater treatment ordinance that does require the prioritization of building permit, that the sites evaluated for compliance with state law and the county's regulations. The second part of that is yes, this will require a road district as part of the approval process.
Toby, where are they at with their drainage and erosion plan?
So as soon as we know if this is going to be approved or not, then the engineer and myself are going to meet to discuss moving forward with the preliminary plan. In conjunction with, we are working with WANC Engineering to make sure the analysis is complete.
Have we had any resistance from any of the neighbors that are engaged in agriculture out there? That this would change their face at all?
No. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing. There was no, no one spoke in favor and opposition to it. They did recommend four to one to, for you to approve this.
Mr. Chairman. Toby, just to kind of go back a little bit on this thing, this has come, and Eric, you can chime in, but this, this is the second go-around on this, is that correct? Because there, there was only a one-way in, one-way out at one time? That's why we kind of turned it down? Is that correct?
Well, a year ago, there was an application that was, a little over a year ago, there was an application that was submitted for, for development on the north side of, of the property. So it wasn't a complete, what I'll call a complete plan is what they've submitted currently. There was also some question about, you know, the interaction with Lake Elvin with that proposed development. So I would consider that one a separate plan and what this, what they propose now is a more complete plan for the county to evaluate.
And I see there's, Toby, if I'm right or wrong, is, is there's two accesses, is that right?
Correct.
In and out, proposed, anyway. So, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Otherwise, I'll ask for the applicant if they want to say anything to come up and have a statement. Otherwise, we'll turn it to the audience.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning. Eric Willidson, Willidson on Engineering Sioux Falls. As Toby indicated, you know, we're back. This is a revised plan from the, the past, more complete. It, it shows the entire development of the property. Obviously, it'll be done in, in phases, as you can see by the concept plan. I guess with that, yeah, we have started the process with preliminary subdivision plans. There are quite a ways along on those. They were tabled by planning in light of, you know, we need to get the zoning obviously passed first. We'll certainly comply with all county regulations for the preliminary subdivision plans. And I guess with that, I, I would just, if there are specific questions, be happy to try and address those.
Any questions for him?
Eric, how big are these lots that you have proposed, these 68 lots? How big are they?
They're all in excess of an acre. Most of them are acre and a half. Some of the ones adjacent to the lake are even a little bit bigger than that, as Toby indicated. There's a couple of the lots that could potentially have access to the lake. And that's one of the things that Game Fish and Parks is kind of discouraging. And so we've essentially left a strip on the north edge as recreation conservation. It would be our intent to dedicate that to Game Fish and Parks and so that there wouldn't be a possibility of a legal access to the lake from those lots. And I think Game Fish and Parks is in favor of that. They're also in favor of removing that pasture area that's adjacent to the lake and turning it to rural residential and, and preventing livestock from grazing in that area that's unsuitable, I guess, for agriculture, row crop. So I, I guess that's a plus for Game Fish and Parks and the lake.
Very good. Any other questions? Any other statement at this time?
Thank you very much.
Being a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to the rezone? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the rezone? Seeing none, I'll turn it back to the board. It's strictly up to us. Is there a motion to approve the rezone?
There is, Mr. Chairman. I move that we pass the ordinance in Lincoln County regarding change of zone request for the property legally described. And I'll just refer to the meeting agenda for the legal description here.
Very good. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I will second that. I'd like to hear discussion, of course, so.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the rezone. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is, falls within my district. I spend a lot of time at Lake Elvin. And so when something goes on out there, I kind of like to know what's happening. In 2008, my wife and I looked at purchasing a house out there. We ultimately didn't for a number of reasons, but had there been something like this available, maybe we would have rethought our decision-making. There is an evolution of development going on in this specific corridor where we're moving towards more recreational lifestyle, recreational development with residential housing bracketing or being next to these kinds of recreational opportunities because it's a lifestyle that people like to live. Yes, it is true, there's a lot of ag land out there, but I've talked to those folks out there and there's no opposition. They're not here today. They haven't made comments in opposition to it because they understand the evolution of housing and growth and development. Just a few minutes ago, we heard from the State's Attorney, Deputy State's Attorney, about growth and development and why we don't have as many types of court cases as what other counties have. And frankly, I think- And frankly, I think it's because of the social demographic makeup of the county. And frankly, I think we're very fortunate to be able to have benefited from responsible growth and development, and I think this is the next step. Having this type of growth and development in a recreational area is going to help increase the property tax base, but also it meets a demand that people have for wanting to live next to water features and things like that and have a recreational lifestyle along with residential development. It's not a shot in the eye towards agriculture by any means, it's just the opposite. In fact, the people who own this land out there were, or are, were our farmers at one time, and they see the opportunity to be able to develop their land for the future. And so those are just, those are my primary reasons for supporting it, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Any other comments, questions?
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Eric, you can just remain seated. What, give me a bird's eye view of how many years before everything falls into place? I mean, if it gets granted, are we talking 10 years or five years?
If I could, Eric, I, I'm going to get a motion to have you come up to, just to record it. Thank you.
Long as I don't have to touch it. No, this will take many, many years. Obviously, it's market-driven, but at, at least 10.
10, yeah.
This is a lot of lots. Even Phase One, if we get three or four, five houses a year built on this, I think, I think so, it'll be a very gradual development. Fortunate to have paved roads on two sides, or both sides of it. It should, again, mesh well with the existing development that's going on and probably be a similar pace to, to what's happening on the western north side of the lake.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, and you, as far as Commissioner Schmidt brought up the septic issues, you don't foresee some of these lots ending up with a mound system? Or you think they'll all pass the perk test and?
I, I.
You know, I'm just, you're guessing, I don't.
I think so. Obviously, Lincoln County has a lot of groundwater.
Yeah.
I can't tell you how many systems I've redesigned this year because of groundwater.
Yeah.
This, to me, is not an area that's, that's susceptible to that. Obviously, all of the lots are larger than required, the one acre that's required by state rules. And again, all of the septic systems will need to be designed by a professional engineer by ordinance.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I'd like to go back. Commissioner Aaron, your words were very well spoken. However, I look at this and I'm thinking, not necessarily that I'm in opposition, but there are other unintended consequences that one could look at. When you are taking a substantial amount of agricultural land, you set the course for amount of similar situations coming because the demand, you are correct, for people to move into the country is, is very large. And this will exacerbate, in my mind, that whole area. I have spent a lot of time out there as well and understand the criteria people like. I just wish they would clean that up so it wouldn't have so much E. coli and other kinds of bacteria in it, which we need to take into consideration as well. I am concerned about, like a road district, for example, when you put that many, potentially, cars out there, you're going to have to also have the protection from our sheriff's department. And we also struggle to have enough deputies on the road at any one time. So while growth is good and while it will add to the tax base and while it will add to the school systems, there are situations which, to me, we have to think through. And at this point in time, I'm not prepared to give my full support to this, but that's just my opinion.
Commissioner Landin, any comments?
I, I originally voted yes on this for the rezone and planning and zoning, but it was with a lot of hesitancy. And the reason the preliminary plan wasn't approved was because the erosion plan wasn't completed and there was some, there's also a drainage plan that's required. I concur with Commissioner Schmidt, Schmidt's observations about the, what it's going to do to other county resources right now. I haven't seen the plan for the road district. Who's going to do snow removal out there? Is it going to be the county or is it going to be the residents themselves? So I think there was a reason that the preliminary plan was submitted at the same time as the rezone so that we would know exactly what was happening out there, and we don't know that yet. So I'm not ready to support this yet either until the preliminary plan is more finalized.
All right. If we're ready, I'll ask Sean to call the roll.
I'll, I'll make one more comment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. You know, I, I didn't, I didn't like this when it first come around. And Jim, you remember that. And Eric, bear with me. I guess, you know, the, the downslope on that north side, it kind of bothers me with those northern lots going into the lake. That kind of makes me a little nervous. And then I'm a little concerned with the septic and, and, and the drains and all that stuff. So, but I, I guess, I guess it's come a time, it'll, it's going to be years before it's totally developed, as Eric has said. So, and we might be facing economic times where the developer will just sit on some of this stuff for a while. So anyway, that's, I guess I, I can, I can support it with, with that, so.
Mr. Willardson, do you, can you respond to some of these concerns that were raised just now? I mean, do you have concrete answers to these questions?
Certainly. In reference to the, the drainage plans, we presented a plan that addressed the drainage in a general manner, which is what's required with preliminary subdivision plans. Certainly, I don't think any of the commissioners would expect the owner of this property to spend that kind of money upfront for engineering when there's no guarantee that the project will even move forward. So I think that's why the preliminary subdivision plans, while they were tabled, there's nothing in the preliminary subdivision plan that would, would put up a red flag, that, that there's something, we're trying to put something over on, on the county. I think the scrutiny that was put into my plan went way above what was probably required at a preliminary subdivision plan level. Now certainly, if this is, and, and I think that's what the Planning Commission didn't understand, was, because I've done, I've put any number of preliminary plans in front of this commission over the last 20 years, and all of them have included the same thing this plan included. So I think there was, and Toby and I talked about it. It did go a little, I guess the review added some things, an erosion control plan. We're not proposing any kind of earth-moving operations that would require an erosion control plan at this stage. Certainly, as, if the project moves along, we'll comply with all the regulations for the development engineering plans, final plans, drainage, road districts. Yes, there'll be a road district, the maintenance of the roads, the cost of the roads, upkeep, snow removal, that's all by the road district, just as it is in most other rural residential developments in this area and across the county. So I think the first time when it was denied, it was maybe incomplete. It didn't go far enough as to how the entire thing would develop over time. So that's what we spent the last year working on, is developing a plan that could be phased in. It is a very desirable way to live. This is an area of the county that has continued to develop like this, and to me, it makes sense. It is a, again, a very desirable way that South Coates want to live.
Eric, oh, just if I may interrupt, you would follow in that numerical thing on the phases, right? Phase one would be first and second, third, fourth? That's how it'd be developed? Or is that right?
That's the general concept now is Phase one is, is that, I'll call it pasture land around the lake. When you say you're concerned about turning that pasture land into rural residential, I think the rural residential effect on the lake is way less than the pasture that, that's currently going on there. Commissioner Schmidt, you spoke of the E. coli in the lake. Lake Elvin's been closed any number of times during the summer because of a spike in E. coli. I would submit that that's not coming from septic systems in the county adjacent to the lake. It's from runoff from the ag land directly into the lake.
I would agree.
And I guess that's what we're trying to, you know, that's one of the benefits from this, is it would eliminate that direct runoff, you know, from this ag land on a very steep slope that goes right into the lake.
Yeah. I, I'm, yep.
Toby, I've got a question for you with regard to the nature of the preliminary plans here. I mean, would you agree with Mr. Willardson's assessment that he's not only complied with the standard procedures you put forth, but that he's included extra material in there or gone above and beyond what is normally required?
You know, I'll go, I'll go back to staff's analysis of the submittals, that we deemed it to be incomplete and some deficiencies. And so part of that is, is that, again, it was tabled by the Planning Commission, and if this is approved, then, you know, staff will work with Mr. Willardson to make sure that those deficiencies are met before it's presented back to the Planning Commission.
What are the deficiencies that need to be remedied here in your, in the staff analysis?
I, I think there, there was a checklist of some items that we had, and again, this, this goes back to review by our consultants, would be by Clark Engineering and WANK Engineering. There, there was some, you know, Commissioner Landin pointed out that there's a requirement that there be erosion control plan. And so, again, in the past, I'm going to say maybe Mr. Willardson didn't submit those along with it, but currently, we're making sure that all of the requirements are met in the preliminary plan. And so that was one such item. The other such item is the drainage plan. There, there's just some, just dialogue that needs to take place between our consultants and our staff and Mr. Willardson prior to that, moving forward with it. But as Mr. Willardson said, is that he's looking at additional costs to the, to the applicant to complete that because it would require some surveying and some onsite work, and so that will cost him, some additional money. So again, we broke this out, so the first step is, is if, if the rezoning's approved, then they will continue with that. If it's not, then that will just will not be proceeded with.
Yeah, I want, I want to get down to the nub of this issue, though, because if there is outstanding do-outs, so is it the standard procedure for the county that an erosion control plan and a drainage plan be submitted prior to this type of hearing? Is that the standard process?
So that, so there's two separate processes. The first would be governed by your zoning ordinance, which is the rezoning. The second part is, is the subdivision, which is the site development of the property. Under that ordinance, it does say that that would be submitted in conjunction with it. We typically haven't done that, and typically, we, we have splintered off at some phase with that because of the costs associated with it. So I'm going to say it's in order, so there's a step process to this. The first step would be the rezoning would be granted, the land use part of it. The second step is the subdivision part of it to make sure that, that, that the, that the, the site development is in compliance with the ordinance. In conjunction with that, that application would be recommended by the Planning Commission. It also comes before you. So there, so there is a second step of approval that you will have with this development, and that is the subdivision plan.
So if I understand correctly, what, what we've been doing is part of a process and including in what's happening here, we have not previously enforced this notion or idea, I guess, requirement, that you come to the table, someone like Mr. Willardson, come to the table with an erosion control plan and a drainage plan primarily because of the cost? Do I understand that correctly?
Some, some have. The, the, the previous rezone that we had in 2018 with Lakeview Estates, that was presented full. It did meet the requirements of the ordinance. It was brought forward in conjunction with it. This one was tabled by the Planning Commission because of the deficiencies.
So those kinds of deficiencies, then, are not necessarily required, but, excuse me, they haven't been demanded in the past, even though we do have a requirement for it? Right?
It is a standard of the ordinance.
Okay.
Yep.
And so if somebody wants to come in here, then, and probably potentially achieve success, they have got to come in, they have to come in with those plans ahead of time, right? I mean, is, is that my understanding? Like, if you want to be able to get this property rezoned, you've got to come forward with, in this instance, an erosion control plan and a drainage plan?
That's the requirement of the, of the subdivision ordinance. However, again, this is a two-step process where, where it's the zoning part of it, and then the second step of this would be the site development part of it. In the past, this board has looked at the site development process as a criteria for the zoning because of concerns with drainage, erosion and runoff and those different types of things. But it isn't per se a standard that we would have to approve that at the same time.
So my next question, then, is specifically with regard to this property. Does staff have erosion control concerns and drainage concerns?
We, we have concerns on the subdivision plan that those items will need to be enhanced in the preliminary plan before the staff would recommend approval of the preliminary plan to the Planning Commission.
So let me ask this question of Mr. Willardson, then. Mr. Willardson, after you heard what Toby just said, do you have any response to that?
I have, if, if you'd like to look, I have the list of comments that we received and also our responses and how we addressed them. Quite frankly, I may, I must have missed it. I didn't know that you couldn't have a street name in excess of 14 characters. So we can fix that.
Yeah, I get that. Those are the easy ones.
These are the easy.
I get that. That's low-hanging fruit.
It's this.
But with regard to the erosion, there seems to be some opposition you're getting that I can hear on the board today with regard to the big-ticket items, which you previously said you thought were kind of expensive, and I get that part, erosion control plan and drainage plan. And if anybody has spent any amount of time here in Lincoln County developing property, they would know that the big watchword is drainage. But then if you want to come here and ask for something without, that doesn't like meet the letter of this statute, the ordinance, you know, what I'm saying is, is do you have the capability to come back and address these concerns before, you know, in order to get the rezone? Do you have the capability to come back with an erosion control plan and to come back with the drainage plan and just check the boxes that Toby has asked to be done?
Absolutely. We, we can solve all those.
Are you willing, then, if I withdrew my motion and tabled this, are you willing to work with Toby and do those things to maybe address some of these concerns? Now, I'm not saying that that guarantees some kind of vote, you know, those are individual commissioners, they can decide on their own, but are you willing to put more of the work in with Toby to get in compliance with the statute, with the ordinance, I mean, of submitting those things at the time of the application, erosion control plan, drainage plan?
I, I would say yes. Obviously, it's the owner's ultimate decision to move this forward. But I think as much as they have into this now, they would like to continue that. I think we would certainly work with them. I worked with Toby, and we agreed to, because the preliminary subdivision plan was tabled, and I believe the planning commission met again last night. And so, we agreed we'd wait another month so that we could get the commission to weigh in on the rezon part of it. Obviously, we can't get our preliminary subdivision plan approved without the zoning being approved. So, no, we're willing to work to address these issues. And I think we need to speak to that. We'll absolutely address the drainage. I know drainage is huge in this county, and we will address it. We did address it on the preliminary plans in a general sense. It's, this is the direction of the drainage. The drainage goes into the lake. That's a borgon conclusion, and we will address that with detention requirements, sediment control, erosion control at the appropriate time. And we certainly will work with Toby and the consultant that they had reviewed this to try and alleviate, or at least put their mind at ease that, yes, we will address these items. We know we can't move forward with approval of the engineering plans, you know, unless we do that.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's asking for gold-plated curb and gutter here. I think they're just asking, meet the standard requirements set forth by staff, just simply enforcing the ordinance.
No, we have every intention of working with Toby, his staff, the consultant, and trying to answer your questions and put your mind at ease that this will be a first-class development that meets or exceeds all the criteria in the ordinances.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I would withdraw my motion, make a substitute motion to table the ordinance change, or to table this issue.
Commissioner Gillespie, you have removed your second, I'm assuming.
Yes, I'll table my second.
And then Commissioner Aaron's, your motion is to table for, is it a specific period of time?
Well, Toby, if this were to be tabled by the commission, do you have a recommendation as to what the amount of time should be?
As Mr. Willardson mentioned, it'll be, the revised preliminary plan would be on the planning commission's agenda in January, so we could bring this back to you in February, would probably be the earliest.
Toby, is that when you think it'll be out of planning and zoning?
Yes.
And then bring it back at the same time as the rezon request?
Yes, so then we'll re-advertise it as a preliminary plan slash rezon.
I think that would work the best, then we know what we're actually voting on.
Just so I'm sure, then, Commissioner Aaron's, your motion is just to table it until after the February planning and zoning meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second to that effect?
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Sorry, Commissioner Gillespie.
That's fine.
If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a motion to, or, not a motion, excuse me. Sean, do call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Toby, sorry I'm late on the next one, but...
This is a public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County regarding a change of zone request for the property legally described as Zon tract one, except north 176 feet thereof and except the south 208.7 feet thereof in the southwest quarter of section 24, township 100 north, range 51 west of the fifth principal meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from the A1 agricultural zoning district to the C commercial zoning district. Planning commission recommends approval five to zero. Location is 27068-469th Avenue near T.
Good morning, again. The applicant for this petition is Brian Gaddy. This site is approximately a little over four acres in size. It's approximately, and it's a little hard to judge here, but across the road is the corporate limits of the city of T. But the closest would be approximately 500 feet to the southwest of the property would be the corporate limits of the city of T. This property is improved with the single-family dwelling and some associated structures or accessory structures on the property. Current zoning is A1 agricultural. The proposal is to change the zoning of a portion of the property, approximately three acres, to commercial. Future land designation of this is urban expansionary, specifically the city of T. On the screen is the zoning and the regulatory floodplain for the area. As you can see, the property to the north, south, and to the, to the north and the south is like zoning and like use. The property across highway, county highway 111 is annexed and the city of T is currently being developed for residential development. The property to the east and adjacent is part of industrial development that's been occurring over the last 20 years. It is like zone, commercial, and like use, warehousing, storage, and the like. There is regulatory floodplain on the property, so any development on the property will require a Lincoln County floodplain development permit. The concept plan that was submitted with the application, since this was within the city of T's subdivision authority, the city of T has weighed in on the concept plan and the site plan. They don't have any particular issues as it currently is. The proposal is to have outside storage specifically for recreational vehicles on the property. As proposed, there would be no site improvements, so there wouldn't be any gravel or any type of surfacing placed in the site location. As far as project analysis, again, this is changing approximately three acres of a 4.3 acre parcel from the A1 agricultural district to the C commercial district. Future land use plan does identify this as urban expansionary of the city of T. This proposal is consistent with the city of T comprehensive plan. They've designated this particular property as future commercial area. Property to the east has been subdivided and rezoned to commercial uses over the last 20 years. This proposed development should be compatible with existing development to the north and the south. However, any proposed use of the property will require a conditional use permit. And as part of that, staff has worked with the applicant to say that we will require screening and some security to take place, which is what the county does require on any outside storage use property. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff. Again, the planning commission did recommend approval of this petition. There was no one that spoke in favor and opposition at the public hearing. Staff hasn't received any comments in regards to this proposal since.
Thank you, Toby. Is there any questions for Toby or your staff? I'll ask if the applicant would like to speak, come up and...
Good morning, everybody. I'm Brian Gaddy. I guess I don't know which guys would like to hear from me, but this is our beginning plan. We'd like to get this rolling and get some outdoor storage on the property and get it making some income. This is our plan.
Brian, let me light the fire here for you. Some of the concerns people have had in the past is security, lighting, fences. People may wanna break in, outdoor storage sheds, video cameras, security plan. Tell me about it. What can you say about all that?
Well, I'm an electrician by trade, so I'm gonna take care of lighting and some electrical around the property, and we plan to put a fence around it. Cameras could be in the future, I guess, but we're planning right away to put cameras on it. Yeah, I guess...
Do you live right close by, don't you?
We live in Sioux Falls, on the west side of town there. And then my partner is actually Mark Putzke, which is Putzke Weld Drilling, right to the south of the property.
And he lives...
He lives a mile away from it.
Right there.
Any other questions for him? How many units is it gonna have?
Well, we're hoping for 40 to 50 units, but we planned for more. But we haven't actually taken campers out there and tried to, you know, see how many we can actually fit based on the demand and how many people we get wanting to store their camper there. We'll make a determination of how many we can actually fit and maneuver around safely.
So, this will all be outdoor storage?
Will you need to raise the topography because of the ponding?
I'm sorry?
Will you need to raise the surface of the ground for the topography? On one of the images, I saw some ponding.
Right now, we're not going to, because we're not a, we had a plan originally that was drawn with a retention pond and stuff, and then we were told that we weren't able to do that because we're in the floodway more than just the floodplain, and then we have to go through some additional steps. But at the moment, we plan on just parking them on the grass.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Turn it to the audience. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this rezon? Showing none, is there anybody in favor that would like to speak to this rezon? Seeing none, I'll turn it back to the board. Board, it's up to your decision again.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval for the rezon.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the rezon. Is there any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, I get to ask Sean to call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Congratulations. Is Terry here, or you got this, or who's got? Toby, you want something yet?
No, I'm just turning this off, thank you.
It's a public hearing for the... Oh, sorry, skipping one. Okay.
And that's why I got up.
Almost got me there. Or you did get me. Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, so we're having a public hearing to supplement the 24/7 budget for the cash transfer. What I need to do is I need to be able to transfer $25,000 to 24/7. That was not budgeted for. I will do the transfer into the 248-371-00. That way, I'm sure that I have enough cash funds to end the year.
Okay, is there any questions for, madam auditor? Given a public hearing, I need to ask the audience if there's anybody that would like to speak concerning this matter? Quiet group today, I'll take that. Back to the board, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and second, and thank you. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Now it's 10, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hey, Terry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one item for you to, I'm looking for approval. Can I authorize the chair to sign an agreement with the DOT for the bridge removal grant for structure 42-200-125?
I'd ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, go ahead. Now, Gillespie, you have the second.
Yep.
Any other questions for that? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sean, are we finished?
No, we need an executive session.
Session.
Oh, very good. Oh, yes, we have our, oh, I will need to notify, I need to leave at, so I'll probably exit it now. So, but I'll take your motion to break executive session.
I would move to go into executive session under SDCL 125-2-sub-1 to discuss our employee evaluations.
Second.
Motion and second, is there, and then I'll have to turn it over to you when you come back out. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, you are in executive session.
Thank you, everyone. Have a Merry Christmas.
Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Motion carries, adjourned.
That was a motion to exit.
Motion to adjourn, Gillespie.
Second.
Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Motion carries now or adjourned?
We are, you bet.